627 to order.
I move to approve the minutes from April 7, 2022. For meeting 626.
Second?
I have one edit. Just in 12D, when I was talking about string transportation contract, given transportation will require students attending summer school. I also believe I made a comment that uncertainty in transportation is a cause for duress for families. I don't think those were the exact words, but I thought it was a more succinct way. So if you could add that to it.
Yeah, I backed that up.
That's my only edit.
Okay, I have an edit that Chris should be moved from a guest up to administration. Correct. And I wanted to clarify something in item nine, which was had to do with here. Beth, for individual, also had a meeting with Provost Weinstein to provide coaching for the early college program. Isn't the coaching coming from someone else? Or did you mean that he was coaching?
We actually attended a session for all new designees. And that is where we were informed that we were going to have a coach added to our team.
Right.
So, yes.
Should be clarified.
Right. So, we, at the meeting, we were, it was shared with us that we would be provided coaching support.
Okay.
That's what, that's what it should say.
Okay, so let's take that sentence out where we'll slight Provost Weinstein who's your coach.
Well, as exciting as that is, that's not true. Yes.
Yes, right.
That was one of my notes. The other is, um, it sounded antigen in the student services report. Third paragraph down the row, I've never seen it as a heightened word. What's my talk about?
Antigen.
Antagen.
No.
It's one word.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I had another one clarification in item 10. The second paragraph, we don't noted that I ready is a band part within the district's grade eight program. It's up in the first. Somehow it Oh, I'm intent. I'm not sure why I put that now because it sounds like I, there was a confusion with I ready. I think I have to take that back. I think it's clear. Sorry. Anyone else want?
Yeah, there was one other thing in the superintendent's report. Second line down.
What number was that?
On the line, second line down.
Yeah.
It's W A M C.
Yes.
Midday magazine.
Correct.
So, broadcast.
All right, guess to me, it's a pretty spiffy now. Ready to approve?
That's amended.
All right, Jeff?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Jane, yes, and Nancy?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not aware of any of this. Here, so we will go on to the student representative report.
We don't have one this evening because we have everybody's activities. Neither do we have a student spotlight.
Oh, they're all busy doing.
They are.
Well, that's very good for them. We miss student input, but we'll maybe get it.
I'll be back.
Yep. Yep. So, uh, public comments. Is there anyone who's on the call who would like to make a comment at this time about anything on the agenda? If so, please use the raise hand function if you can. Otherwise, you can raise your physical hand if I can see your image. See any hands? Do you see any hands? All right. So now we are going to the business manager's report. And I'm not sure who's giving it tonight.
I think Nikki's giving it.
Nikki's giving it.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You get me tonight.
That's okay.
Okay, so we don't have much and I'm going to apologize. I've been coughing. I'm sure Beth and everybody is sick of hearing it in the office, so I'm going to be quick. We have a quick warrant, a quick warrant report. We have our health insurance warrant. That's just our regular monthly insurance expense. We have several vendor warrants. One of them is our bond interest payment. So we're just posting it to the ledger. We have our 1505 is the retirement and taxes. That's the monthly warrant to recognize the deductions from payroll. And then 1602 and 1603, excuse me, are they're basically monthly expenses, including tuition. We bought some oil, so we were paying for oil, transportation, and other just regular expenses. We have our payroll warrant. And the last one is our P card warrant, which is various monthly expenses. Are there any questions? Jeffrey?
Yeah, just, why is the bond payment not showing from a general fund amount or another amount? Is that 1006?
Yeah, so that should be, it comes from the general fund, sorry.
So this should be reflected in general?
Yep, so we can fix that. Yep.
A move to accept the warrants, provided that it's updated with bond.
Second. And
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Danell?
Yep.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Jane. All right. And there are no grants or gifts or budget transfers, so that completes the business manager's report.
Easy tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So now we go to the business district member count. I'm not sure how many of you listened in to the meeting on Tuesday. Besides the people who are members of the team. Thank you, those of us who remember for being there. I, I think, um, please, Bonnie, if you want to say anything in particular, as we know, and Laura as well. I want to open the floor to comments that you might want to share with the full committee.
Welcome for it. And Tuesday evening, the regional planning board approved the recommendation of the task force to pursue a full merger of the two districts. With the high school being located on the Mind of In Mountain campus. And that was a majority voted for it. All of the no votes came from Southern Berkshire. And there's a lot more to say. Jeff, you had a question?
I was just going to ask what the vote was, like.
The vote was, I think, 18 to six or six. The first one on postponement was seven.
Seven.
But on the actual motion, it was six.
Six to 16.
So it was all of Eggermont, Danell, and Tom Burkle, and George Hugern, Jane from New Marlboro, Laura from Monterey, and myself from Sheffield.
So with, the first vote was to postpone, so how long?
With a deadline to postpone 50 or fewer days.
It was 60.
You had to adjust it.
Well, I, what I said was, I, I called Lynn Kuchar before the meeting to find out what options were open to us, so that we could have more information before the vote. And he says the maximum that you can ask for in a postponement is 60 days. And that's what I put up first, but then I said 60 days or whatever seems necessary. I've made it a little bit less rich. But 60 days was the farthest path.
What had happened was on, on that, that day, or I think it was on Monday, the FAQ was posted by Jake Everwine. And these were responses to frequently asked questions. And we really, I think, did a great job in, you know, responding to questions that were out there. But people really didn't have time to absorb it or ask follow up. And it really brought up for me a lot of other questions. So I supported, well, I seconded and supported the motion to postpone. I think it's really important, if, even if you didn't read the 150 something pages, a lot of the questions that are on the FAQ page at atetowns.org will be a lot of the questions that you may have been hearing.
Dennis? Well, I can, I can, you know, I'm referring to the note that Jake Everwine sent around. I'm sure you're aware that Jake had sent a note around to the world. Okay.
No.
No.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, you know, as far as I know, because other people have seen it and have asked me about it. But basically, the concern I have from his note is
None of us know about.
None of us know.
Well, yeah, basically, what's my concern is, is in his note, he says the vote was to move ahead with additional study and the development of a draft regional agreement. That's not what I understand was actually, so he's, he's basically telling the world that it's a done deal, other than we need to, you know, figure out how to do the regional agreement.
Well.
That, that was not my interpretation of what I had understood.
Well, that, that's not what was said at the meeting. It was said that
Well, just so you know, the whole world is now being told that it's a done deal.
Is that from an email?
This is an email that, that Jake sent.
Do you have any idea?
I've had about three people that have, that have said they've got the same email. I'd be glad to distribute it to everybody on the school committee. It was sent on Wednesday, yesterday, at 10:19 in the morning.
Okay, well, please just send it off to us. My understanding is that what the board felt was important was to decide which of the models was worth our looking more deeply into. And that was what we were voting on is that we were going to look more deeply and ask questions and suggest amendments or whatever to that model. There was nothing said about, as far as I heard, nothing about the legal stuff, which is the step after that.
Right, well, and that's what I get very concerned about here, is that he's combining together that the decision was to not only do the study, but as a quote, "parallel effort." I mean, that's not the word to use, but that's exactly how you interpret.
Can you quote the words that he used?
Yes, that, this vote was to move ahead with additional study and the development of a draft regional agreement, as I had mentioned on Saturday. So I don't know, you know, have any idea what he said on Saturday or who that was to.
That must have been your task force, you know.
You may have sent that to the task force and not.
Not the task force, but you're, you know, you set that Saturday super gym group, the Donna Super Junior group, that's the Berkshire Burke 12 or whatever.
So you're still on the mailing list for the Burke 12.
Right.
And the rest of us are not.
Prob, probably, yeah.
That's right.
Well, thank you for the information because.
But that is not what was done.
Yeah.
And one of the possible steps is the problem is communication and that he took it upon himself to do that. Because one of the possible steps as part of the study is to come up with a draft eight towns regional agreement that was not discussed at, in the motion. That the motion was the option of
Was to continue the work along the lines of that particular.
Investigation of that up. Yeah. So, okay, thank you, Dennis, for sharing that with us. It's worth.
Well, I, I think that it's important that somebody generate the reverse publicity back that basically said that this is not a done deal. This, this says we want to investigate this particular path further. You know, and, and, you know, the first thing that, you know, one of the people that called me, asked me about was, well, have they figured out if it's cheaper yet?
No.
And I mean, but, but that's what I mean. There's, some of that basic work has not even been done. And it's, so it's extremely misleading to like tie those two things together.
Agreed. The next steps are investigating everything, further investigating, if you go that route. Transportation costs, operational costs, and I know what you're saying. All these other things need to be done. The regional planning board, the board that you have representatives on, stays in effect. And we're supposed to be the ones who are involved in the process along with whoever is brought in. But in reality, that it was clear from everything that was presented and even what Lucy Trashers said, no, this is tomorrow, you're not putting together a new regional agreement. There's work that has to be done first.
So Nancy?
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe, maybe I misunderstood what I read in the edge, but the edge was pretty clear, at least in my understanding, that this was process that was going to go on. And that, that this was something that's going to take one to seven years, basically, was how they finished it. And I think they also presented the fact that Southern, basically, people who voted against Southern Berkshire.
Right.
But I think they gave you guys really good credit for, you know, like, there was nothing, you know, saying, yeah, there are a lot of questions that have to be answered. So I think that, 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 I think, was at least my impression of the public presentation that was provided. I don't know about anybody else.
I thought Terry's article was pretty much on target. I thought he did a really good job from the edge of reflecting. I don't know what everybody else.
Yeah, Heather did a nice job in the Eagle too. So I, I, I think they were clear. They are not promoting anything beyond what we think that we did.
Who's the thing?
The two reporters for the Eagle and the Edge. Okay, so it is very confusing for the public. And I think every time when we converse with people, we just have to let them know that that's where the process is. And that Tom Burkle had a lot of questions that he didn't enumerate. But there is, there is opportunity for more information and more consideration. And I think one of the things I brought up is, I think, public input now is really important. So if the planning board doesn't have a mechanism for people to enter into the discussion, I think as a school committee, we have to, and representatives of the board that are on the school committee, should invite the public to send us their concerns and ideas. Because right now, I'm not on the committee that you're on. You might be able to say what plans you know about.
Yeah, a doodle went out and asking for availability of the outreach committee to me. And it will be based on the dates in the next couple of weeks. But I want to really second, like you said, because people are really talking about what's going on. I'm hearing, from the people I know, who didn't know what was going on. And I think it's going to be critical that the correct information is put forward.
So, just to reiterate, everybody can go to atetowns.org or, you know, you know, the RS, blah, blah, blah. Initials.org to find out when these public meetings are. So if anybody's interested in the progress, and there should be public comment on most of those meetings, if people want to say something directly to the superintendent.
And, and what Jake noted in the information that he sent out is that, should anybody have any questions, you can, it's a perfect place to post it. The, what you just raised, what you think, what you believe is the methodology that he is, if you go, it's under resources. If you go to atetowns.org, under resources, there's now a new page for the FAQs. Jake is welcoming any additional questions. And, you know, yours is a perfect one to raise, you know, what your understanding really was. Because, yeah, this is really critical for our future. I did, I'm sure you did, I did an article for the Sheffield Times. And, you know, they are so powerful, a lot more to do.
Yeah, I did not do one for New Marlboro newspaper because it was felt that it had to be done enough by a person who was more neutral. And I handed it off to another person who threw out his hands and said, I don't understand this, and I'm not ready to do it again. They have yet to have an article. I don't know who he's talking to. I, I gave him a little bit of an orientation. I gave him links and I said, okay. And we didn't get an article yet, so.
Who was that?
Uh, I don't think I'm going to share.
Well, mine was brief and basically said, you know, you can get more information.
Well, I do encourage people to attend meetings and.
Right. And our next full one, I think, is May 7.
I think so. So that's Tuesday. Weeks from now.
May 6th and Friday, so.
Well, I've got it on my calendar here and I will make sure that it goes out to everybody in an email.
Yeah, I think that would be the intention. Just for those of us who are technically scheduled.
Yes, it's Monday, May 9.
Monday, May 9, it's 5:30. Yep. I did want to get a Monday, May 9, is the next full meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
And then are those meetings recorded and available to the public after that?
Or? Yes. Yes.
And the link for that is the.
I, I think in order to get a recording, you may have to ask for, you can see the minutes, but if you want, once they're approved. But if you want the recording, I'm pretty, I think you may have requests.
Through Lucy was, I mean, I don't know if it's changed since then. We could ask her, but.
Well, she's on now.
Oh. Well, we could.
Shake your head that if somebody wants to get a recording, you are the one they need to talk to?
Well, they need to do, Jane, is send me an email. I'll send them the recording.
Okay.
Yes, that's what it had. Okay, so.
Thank you for being here, so we can make these things clear.
My pleasure.
Okay. So since you're, the discussion is not over. And we can move on to the next item unless somebody else has something they want to add. We do want to thank the members of, from our full committee who are on the board, because a lot of extra time and work has been put in. So chairman's report, I have two things. One short business item is, in our last meeting, we, I heard a request that we should have a workshop session, and I was going to give you dates. Talk about the anti-bias, anti-racist action plan. So we do not have our regular Thursday meeting on May 5, 19, or June 2. Those are the ones coming up. I was wondering if you wanted to grab one of those Thursdays. We'll have a regular at 6:00 PM workshop or, you know.
Well, I would just like to say something one year before, because in my report, I don't know if I've had time to look at it, but there is an educator recognition night that is an opportunity for us as a district, every district of Berkeley County is going to be recognizing educators that evening. So I was going to petition the committee to consider changing that day so that anybody from the committee who would like to attend, but the administrators who were presenting would like to be able to go as well. So, so that might play into what position. It's on the 26th, it's on the 26th of May.
Oh.
At MCLA, so I put it in here. I'll give more detail.
Also, then we would be changing the 26th meeting to.
Right, to another date. So I just want to say that before you pick one.
Okay, okay. And I wanted to check in, is June 2 going to be an awards night or anything?
June 1 is the awards night.
Jay, table. Let's have the discussion of all the dates when it's time to just discuss that.
That's fine.
Okay.
Uh, we can even put a, I can go back to the calling everybody by email once we get a sense of all the dates that are celebratory in some way. So maybe we will table this. We will, I will just get back to you on another one. The other thing I, I feel like I need to say to you all is that I am incredibly impressed with what our district has accomplished during COVID and during planning board time. Best work, that work along with our admin team has been amazing, and we have so much to be proud of. And I don't think enough recognition is happening because there's a lot of budget issues that people are, in our communities are worried about. And I just want to say publicly that there's a lot to celebrate, that the budget process was incredibly thoughtful. And we have far surpassed any other district in keeping our expenses down. The only problem we have is our big transportation issue. And that doesn't make it easier for the taxpayers, but I just think people should understand that we're moving forward with growth in the academic programs, training of our teachers in a very economical way, by some humility and actual magic, I would say. So I just thought I, I wanted to say that the school committee is very grateful for all the work that's being done. Over to the superintendent.
So I get to talk about budget. So, super popular right now. Um, so we are, it's, it's time for the whirlwind budget tour. Our town meetings are coming up starting next Monday. We have sent a one-page town-specific document to the communities, which we do every year prior to people voting on the budget, so they can see specifically how their town is, is affected. We always do our best to attend all of the town meetings in case there's any questions. We did the it's really our second installment of the news flyer that many people here. that many people here on our community outreach and advocacy took the time to write as well as a big section on what, what our communities are investing in. So I think it has been really well received so far. And I, I think it really was a really nice job done by the group. So and with that said, also, there's also plenty of budget information, more than you ever want to read. Spreadsheets available on our website, so please feel free. And if anybody has any questions, they can send them to me. I've offered to speak at any meeting, you know. We're, we're pretty much an open book with where we're at. The House Ways and Means Committee has released on, on April 13th, right as we were walking out the door for April break, they released their budget and there were a few changes that I think are worth mentioning. Now the Senate will be taking them up, but the, there was a petition including from us in our advocacy letter to move the foundation budget inflation factor from the 4.5%, which they capped it at, to at least 5.9 if not higher. And that did not happen, so it remains capped at 4.5%. They did propose a change, House Ways and Means proposed a change of the per people aid. So instead of $30 per people, they moved it to $60 per people, something else that we asked, not as high as we asked, but something else we asked for in our advocacy letter. Regional transportation stayed the same between the governor's budget and the House Ways and Means, but it represents about an 80% reimbursement rate in regional transportation. Rural aid, which was at $4 million in the governor's budget, is the same in the House Ways and Means budget. And the regionalization grant funding that has been funded for the last several years at $500,000 was zero with the governor and is zero of House Ways and Means. So next up is the Senate and then probably conference committee, but that's where we are right now. So still moving through the state budget process. We're voting before that.
Two questions.
Sure.
Could you just repeat, what's regional transportation? So it's still split at 80%?
It's about, it represents, so it's $77.8 million. We're clearly not getting that. That's the whole state. But it's, it represents about an 80% reimbursement rate. So on your prior year's reimbursable costs.
Of your prior year?
Well, yeah, it's always a.
And then the other one, you were talking about the funding for regional school districts. What was that?
Zero. Oh, no, that, that's the regionalization grant. The, the rural aid grant is the one that, this is the first year we qualified for this current year. So that was the one that we got $70,000 about and it was out of $4 million. There's a very complicated, complex formula for that also, to calculate that. So I'm not quite sure why we haven't, haven't qualified in the past, but we at least did this year. So they're still proposing the same level. So I'm assuming we'll qualify whatever. But that's not guaranteed because the other years we did not get anything.
Do you have any sense of where the Senate is on this?
Not yet. They said that, you know, they were going to be taking, taking it up. So usually we get feedback for advocacy from MARS, the Mass Association, those school superintendents. Masbo, the Masbo Conference is coming up in a couple of weeks. I will attend. It's actually the week of the 19th and they'll be talking about advocacy usually. The commissioner's out there, Jay Sullivan's out there, so we might get a little more information on, on where they're thinking. But I don't know anything yet. They, so they were saying the same thing, you know. We didn't get what we hoped, but that doesn't mean, you know, keep at it, keep at the advocacy. They usually tell you, go back at these things.
Is there anything we can do as a school committee?
It would be the same thing. I think they're always saying, talk to your legislators. If you didn't like what they did, go back and say it again. They're, they're encouraging is, it's never enough just once, you know. They also don't like one big letter. They think everybody should send it. You know, the more.
Well, if you can share with us the data that you picked up that you would support from the House side, Ways and Means, we could definitely, well, some of us.
Well, we could update the, the one that we sent. I'd still, okay, so we could do that.
Thank you.
Can I ask for a clarification on the educator recognition ceremony? Is that Zoom or in person?
Uh, it is both, but this is, this is the first time they're doing it this way. So we, we just got information on it. It is going to be in person. My understanding is it's going to be in person at Sandy and Julie, if I get this wrong, at, at MCLA. And, and all Berkshire districts are going to attend. And once we officially tell the people that have been nominated this year, which, you know, we want to, we want to do that in a, in a nice, exciting way. And then we will share with all of you and invite everybody to that, that evening. But I just don't think, I, the superintendent and/or designated speaks a little bit about why the person was nominated. So I think that would be nice for people to hear and, and support if they would like to. And then I, I believe there's a token.
Yes.
Award that they get and each district goes through the group of people. So that's why I'm saying, I don't think we'll be back in time to.
Yeah. So should we change right now, change the date since the 26th is set? Well, correct. Or our next meeting is, is what day in June?
Well, we have a second. No. Yeah, we have a second and.
I have it as the 9th.
Oh.
9th of June and the 23rd of June.
I think not packing May also with a bunch of meetings might be a good.
So I will be at the conference. I will be at the Masbo Conference on the 19th. So that's, but that's fine. I can. So we meet on the 12th and we can either move something to the second, you know, you can switch it second, 16th or you can do.
Oh, I see.
Of June.
And on the 19th, oh, that, so the 19th is not good for you, right?
That's, that's the Masbo Conference, which I'll meet down with all the business officials.
Yeah, so you're saying you won't be here tonight.
I moved, that's the 26th meeting on the 26th.
Yes.
I, I motioned that we move the meeting of the 26th to Thursday, June 2nd. Let's discuss.
Okay, so then we would meet June 2nd.
And June 9th.
Well, I made a vote. And we did, now we have a motion on the floor to move it to the second.
So instead of having two meetings in the beginning of the month and later on.
Sorry.
Just do the, do the second instead of the ninth and then do the other one on the 23rd.
Right.
You can, yeah, that.
To do that.
Okay, so to the second and the 16th.
So this motion is gonna get a little fixed up, okay? I would like, I would like you to amend your motion and we'll get some.
I would like to amend my motion that we move the meeting from May, sorry.
26th.
26th to June 2nd. And the June 9th meeting to June 16th.
So we'll have three meetings in June.
216.
216.
216, 23, okay. Or do you just want to sprout the 9th and have the next one on the 6th, on the 23rd?
We can get rid of one?
Yeah.
In that case.
We normally only have two.
Look at how big.
Kid in the campus store.
I'm not making the second and kill the ninth, so I was like.
All right.
Can we call it canceled?
Let's see, if we're doing the second in June, can we do the second and the 16th instead of the 9th and the 23rd? And we have two weeks in between.
Right, that's why it said, wow.
Okay.
Okay, so keep those dates I said, and then we cancel the 23rd.
And the 9th, correct.
I withdraw my motion for somebody more.
Let's see if this captures it, that we cancel the school committee meeting of May 26th, that we schedule school committee meetings on the 2nd of June and the 16th of June in place of the 9th and the 23rd.
Second.
All right. Ready to vote? All right. Uh, every.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where am I voting at?
Laura?
You know, Elizabeth is pointing out in the chat that the NMC third grade recognition night is on June 16th. That's kind of important.
It is very important.
So I'm gonna say no.
Yeah, okay, well.
So then what about the second and the 23rd?
We actually, we, we're in the middle of a roll call, so I think we have to.
We have to kill this one.
No, 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 you have to finish the roll call.
Finish this one.
Yeah.
But understand that there's three parents on the committee, two of whom are.
We've already heard.
That have kids being recognized on.
We're turning it down.
All right, so the rest, so we have a no from Laura. We need a bunch of no's now.
I had to count.
Dennis?
Yes.
Okay, Bonnie?
No.
Uh, Tara?
No.
Okay, Nancy?
No.
Jane, no.
Okay, the motion I'm making now is we cancel.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz. The, the school committee meeting of the 26th. And we schedule the 2nd and the 23rd of June as our, as the two school committee meetings for month of June.
Okay.
Any questions?
Don't have anything going on.
All second, but before we go to vote, can we discuss?
Yeah, okay, we're not gonna vote until we clear those two dates that there, we're not conflicting with graduation issue. No. Recognition or, and we're not, uh, school's out on the 22nd, so there shouldn't be anything going on on the 23rd. Okay, so I think we're ready to.
All I will say is that the rain date for the senior, the awards night is, it's June 1st right now. The rain date is June 2nd at 5:00, so we can still have a school committee meeting. I'm just letting everybody know. There is others, there's a lot of stuff happening. Just so you know, I don't want anybody to say you didn't tell us, but that's just the rain date, so.
Understood.
So the dates were voted on, the June 2nd.
And 23rd.
I mean theoretically, if the rain date is imposed, we could theoretically reschedule.
It should be done within the hour. It starts at 5:00, so we can still have a school. I'm just sharing.
Okay, great, 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 okay. The 2nd and the 23rd of June and no meeting on the 26th of May, right?
Yes.
So, Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Jane? Yes, and Nancy?
Yes.
So I'm so glad we didn't try to do that in email.
That was collaborative work, so with clarity. Just for a question, to be sure.
Yeah.
We are meeting May 12th.
Yeah.
Yes.
We next meet on June 9th.
The 2nd.
June 2nd, sorry about that. And then the 23rd.
Correct.
All right. Now, are you finished with your report?
Well, I think I could be. I just want, so there is some more information on where we are with our early college programming. So the only thing that I want to highlight is that the next community, we want to involve the community in the development of this program. And the next thing is going to be to host a community engagement process where we create the profile of an early college graduate. So there's gonna be much more information to follow, but we hope to get that done prior to June 30th. So I'm hoping we'll get to meet our coach, that she will come out and help us facilitate that discussion. Bar College will be here. And I should say also that the professional development between the faculty and staff of Mount Everett, who are going to be getting early college certification and the 15th. It's early college, yes, yeah. And, and then they're gonna work with the faculty over at Bar College, developing their coursework that they will begin teaching the following year. So it's pretty exciting, work going on.
So my question, I told to Jesse and you, what information's been shared with our students so far?
Just what they is in the prep studies and, yeah, and, and guidance, I believe, is Bonnie is gonna go in and talk with students about Bar College.
Have you gotten any feedback?
From our students?
Yeah.
I'm excited about the opportunity for more classes.
Which is always what they want and that's true.
Yeah.
And what about faculty?
Uh, faculty's excited about it. We've got a group that's gonna do some PE about possibility, the possibility of, not this year, but next year, teaching some classes for college credit. And so when we go wall-to-wall with the student class, we're gonna need some more teachers to be teaching those public courses. So I think they're excited.
And have you shared with them yet, like the information that Beth shared about the, are you there, Jesse?
I'm just picking up.
Oh, okay, the outcomes, you know, the fact that they graduate at a much higher rate of college, less debt, all the statistical stuff.
Yeah, we've had conversations throughout the year about it as we move closer to sort of this wall-to-wall.
And then is that, when you have this meeting, is that when you're going to do your project with finance and reaching out to the community?
Yes, well, there's multiple things happening. Our communications team is working on a document that is gonna be readily available to the school community. It can be put, it's almost like a marketing tool about early college. There, but also this, this, there's a whole process around some surveys and some community meetings where we talk about what skills are we hoping that our kids have to be ready? And that would involve community members, parents, students, school committee members, so businesses, all, all sorts of stakeholders. So I think that'll be another, almost like a mini video process. So I think that, that's.
I think it's so exciting.
It's really great.
All right, thank you very much. And now we look at curriculum, curriculum and professional development for an annual report.
I just have a few things to share. Our sixth edition of our Educating Our Eagles is actually gonna be going out this weekend. And I just can't believe that this is the sixth one already.
It feels like a blink of the eye, you know, that we just started this whole idea.
But Carrie Giordano has just done such a lovely job putting it together and making it look so professional. So we're excited about. So we're excited about that, and we have two more after that to wrap up the year.
Can we see them? At what site, please?
So she pushes it out on the app, but then if you go to our webpage and you go to the curriculum, it's underneath the, where your school committee stuff is, you'll see curriculum and instruction. You click there, and all of the old ones are there as well as the current. So you can look back and see what's.
Thank you.
Up today.
Because on the news feed too, when it's.
Right. But she just, she does a beautiful job making it look very professional. Teachers have done a great job getting the information to her so that everybody can see exactly what's going on in the classrooms. So I think it's been a huge success.
Can I just interject? Thank you to the teachers who are making the effort to.
Yeah, it's another extra thing.
I know, and it's, but it's so valuable, and I've learned so much in looking at the newsletter or whatever you call it.
Yes, advocate.
No.
May is turning out to be a math month for us. We actually have three days where our coach from iReady is going to be coming in and working during the day in the classrooms with our teachers. And we have the three days where Mike Flynn from Mount Polio will be coming in during the day to coach and work with our teachers. So very excited about both of those. Really, I think when I was a teacher, the most profound professional development was when I had someone in the classroom working with me, giving me feedback in the moment. So I know the teachers are really looking forward to having those experiences and having the guidance. And next year, because, you know, knock on wood, we will be at this place in COVID world, we will be able to have these experiences spread out throughout the course of the year, instead of everything kind of crammed into May. But it is the way of the world, and we're just happy they're all gonna be here. Yes, Jeff?
So the, the last meeting we had, you showed us the progress reports, kind of like that a bit in totals. What are you guys planning on doing, like, the last assessments? And when do we get to kind of see your data crunching after that?
I think that I'll be able to share it with you at that June twenty-third meeting, since we're having one so late.
Yeah.
I should be able to have it all together by then.
Really cool how the progress, even just from the first and twenty-second, was pretty material, so.
Let's see.
It's really.
Yeah, I'm really excited to see the end of the year and domestic, that it will be.
Well, I think if I could just share a little story, I have, as you know, I have my little jar of treats that, that I have. I have every day students who come down and talk about their day, and, and they check in on me, that's what they say, before, before a treat. But they were, they came in yesterday and their hair was standing up straight, and they were all, and I said, wow, what's going on today? They're like, math MCAS. And I said, how'd it go? They're like, I think I did really well. This is pretty good, but I mean, their hair's standing up there. I'm like, you go ahead and get a treat, go ahead. But they were like, I felt like, one student today said, well, you know, I actually did the workout, and it was an answer. Yeah, it was really cute. So it is, you know, you can. Yeah, yeah. So they're, they're funny and they're, they're exhausted, but they feel like they, they're getting it. So I think, I thought that was really a fun story to share.
All right, anything else you'd like to add?
I think that's it for this.
All right, then we'll move on to our director of student services, Sandy.
Hi, good evening. I didn't get a chance to actually get a report in writing, so I apologize, but I do have a few things I want to share. One being that we have been looking at our pre-kind registration numbers, and we definitely have a high number of registrants and returning students because we expanded it last year, as you know, to accept all three and four-year-olds. And we have made the decision that South Egremont next year will be a pre-kindergarten program. And it will be, we're looking at expanding our early childhood program over at New Marlboro. So it's really, really shocking to see how many young people we have coming our way. And obviously, it's a real need for our families and for our children. So looking forward to working with that early childhood group who is prepared to conduct the screenings on June twenty-third and twenty-fourth. They'll be doing pre-kindergarten and kindergarten screenings, and as we were talking about it, we realized that our pre-kindergarten numbers had gone up so much that we had to kind of flip-flop our teams in order to meet the needs of all of those children, so that's great. But we have, we're gonna be posting for those positions, but already a lot of professionals have committed to conducting those screenings on those two days, which are the two days right following the end of school. So we're holding a pre-kindergarten and kindergarten screening fair. So we did that last year with kindergarten screening fair. We're, we're doing it with pre-kindergarten this year. And our speech language pathologists and providers and occupational therapists, physical therapists, and educators are gonna be all participating in that. So that is exciting news. Our summer program starts June twenty-seventh. We are just moving right along. There's like no, we decided that it was important to get it rolling as soon as possible. We are partnering again with Flying Cloud this year to have an extended day, STEAM type of program in the afternoon. With the education, the academic component largely being in the morning, eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, then lunch is provided. And then the afternoon program is twelve, twelve to three for certain grade levels. We've got designated grade levels because, of course, we want to make sure that the groupings make sense. We've put letters out to families about that program, again, starting June twenty-seventh, running Monday through Thursday for five weeks. It ends on July twenty-eighth. We're also looking at, again, offering a finite number of slots to attend Camp Russell. We did that last year. We're talking about how to continue to make that happen, and we were talking about it today, and we're working on it. And I'm talking with the Boys and Girls Club of Pittsfield, who runs Camp Russell, and we already have a partnership kind of together on that, which is great. So we'll be setting that up over the next week or two, because we need to solidify, camps are very, very high demand right now. So want to make sure we have our spots. And the Warm Line, which you've heard about for, oh gosh, I don't know, a year plus, went live on Monday. So it is happening, and we have been handing out flyers to, you know, the young, the young families in our district. Post, I just posted it on our live feed and on Facebook this week, and we're getting it out to like community organizations so they can post the flyers. So please, please, please encourage families to call that, because if they call during live time, which is six to eight PM, Monday through Thursday, they are getting a mental health professional on the other end of the line. So I was saying this to a parent today, I'm like, you could literally call every week. So think about that as a resource, because it's very hard to get counseling services right now. So that is my update for this evening.
Okay, I'm gonna, we have, we have a question from Bonnie and then you. And Laura, thank you.
Oh, okay, a few things. One, the, you had mentioned about early screening now for dyslexia.
Yes.
And.
Yes.
You have the professionals who are able to do it.
Yes, we do.
And.
And the assessments.
And have you seen numbers?
So it's a screening, so that it lets us know if there is a tendency toward having a dyslexic profile. So yes, we have, we have, it's provided us with information that's very valuable as we move forward in our instruction and how we're providing instruction, and that's part of what we're doing. And our pre-kindergarten programs right now is getting early literacy and early numeracy as part of their day already. So I think that we're taking all of this information, and hopefully it will decrease the number of actual referrals we have. Not that we can get rid of a specific learning disability, but so we can provide interventions early and often. That's, that's the goal of that. So it's been terrific.
Good, good. And then my follow-up on Warm Line, I did my some diligence.
Did you call?
Submitted an article to the Sheffield.
She goes, did you call? I called.
That I really need.
I was telling the folks that are manning the line, and they're like, we're just waiting for the calls. I just, you know, ready, so call them. They're ready to talk about.
Done that Tuesday night. But I know that you provide the services in Spanish, but does that mean that you have somebody every night?
No, we don't. So what we would do then is we would take the call and then arrange to have an interpreter at another time so that we could, you know, address that. Obviously, not everybody is Spanish speaking, but we're prepared to jump in where we need to. And they can text. We have a, an app.
And I included in my article that this is free of charge to any more of these halls.
That's correct.
So I assume I am correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Being largely funded right now through a grant that we received, that mental health grant. So that's where.
Thank you so much.
To get such great professionals to run this. I'm telling you, I mean, it's a great service.
Oh, yeah.
That's available. Eight, seven, one, seven, eight, one, nine, zero, seven, one, seven, eight, one, nine, zero.
I put that in my article today.
Hey, Sandy, I also, I wrote a little, a school committee update for the Monterey News, and I mentioned the Warm Line. So I'm glad to hear that's going. I was actually curious about the five-week summer program. My recollection from last year is that priority was given to kids with IPs, and that after, if there were slots available, you'd open it up? Or is it just, is that, that might be all wrong.
So there's actually, we, kids, students who are on IEPs, we are obligated to provide programming, so that happens. However, we also, and we're trying to coordinate this and work together, which we've done the past couple of years, offering it to students based on, we have to obviously take in information, teacher recommendation. We look at their progress monitoring data like Fastbridge and iReady, and make offers and invites to families. And we kind of go through based on highest need and, and move down through the list.
Okay, so theoretically, could, would it be opened up, would remaining slots be opened up to everyone else?
Yes.
Other students that, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we did that last year, actually, yes.
I think it's clear that parents shouldn't assume that they can call you and try to get a spot, but it's that open that.
It's a tiered.
It's tiered, yes. That's a good way of describing it, it's tiered.
Yeah, so I suppose if a parent is curious, they can get in touch with you, and then they'll get feedback on.
Yes, they can contact me, they could contact Charles, and Nancy Doherty is our coordinator for the summer programs this year, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Last year, I believe, also there was something capacity due in that, right? Do we have fewer seats and spots or?
Not last year as much, the year before we did.
Sorry.
I mean, I will tell you that we have X number of teachers, right? So fortunately, we've had a lot of people apply. We want to make sure that the grouping, it's meaningful. We do not want classes the size of a typical class. We don't feel like that would be as beneficial. We're trying to make sure that children have some more individualized and smaller construction, because we're, there's known gaps. So our group, we're trying to look at our groupings to be about ten children at the maps, eight to ten.
Is this gonna keep up with like the accelerated learning framework of?
The roadmap?
Yeah, like.
Yes, that's, that's kind of what we're looking for. Now, obviously, this year, we're, in, in the past couple of years, we're really seeing some children who have some gaps. And we're especially seeing, and I'll just put this out there, that math is a particular area of concern. It seems to me like the increased stress kind of goes hand in hand with the math. Yeah, so we're really focusing on math, we're focusing on reading, and especially those early literacy and numeracy skills, and socialization. We are gonna have a school adjustment counselor here during summer as well, which is great.
Sorry, you just triggered another question. Are you looking, really focusing also on that, like, early education coupling, like, up to third grade?
Yes, yeah.
And so that's gonna be the priority, is like.
Yes. Yeah, so we're, we're taking into account all needs. You know, I've, I've taken phone calls, and we're really considering all needs. And if we can provide something, we will. And we're looking maybe at the, the experience for the Camp Russell. Maybe that's the older students that are in fourth or fifth grade, you know, so that there's another option available to them.
My last question, just how many sections of pre-K are there gonna be next year? How many sections of kindergarten? How many sections of first, just?
So we're in the process of working that out.
Yeah, well, I don't know. We haven't fully decided what that's gonna be yet. So there's gonna be, there's gonna be at least one more, so. There's at least five, yes.
Thank you.
Very good. So now we are gonna be going to item thirteen A, the approval of the FY twenty-two, twenty-three academic calendar. We'll talk on with your voting.
Yeah. I don't know whether I can do it, everything, everybody reporting, and you have Chris here. I just, is it okay if I ask if there are any updates on your cybersecurity and other programs?
Let's get to the business admin here, and then we will get.
Okay, so that could shoot.
Yeah.
I'm giving you a warning.
If you would like to in the future, Tim, have the opportunity to have a standing item.
Should I, should I be here? Yeah, I really, because we're doing so many things.
Would you like to, if you're gonna have a standing?
No, actually, I don't, I don't think I'm gonna have a standing one. I would just.
I mean, if it's on the agenda, you can say, no, I have nothing to say.
Sure.
Okay.
I don't think he wants to be looped into the regular.
Okay, so just like the subcommittee are all listed, and we don't always deal with them. So I, I don't mind adding, because you are an administrative leader, so you should, thank you very much, have the option. So I'm gonna put you down. No, or.
I would say, I try not to do it to, I, I have central office people, I believe, should have a seat here. And not that he shouldn't have a seat, but I don't think he should be a regular, right? You would then be requiring principal, you know, everybody would be at that equivalent level, and so I don't think that.
Sorry to have introduced this. I just, there is so many exciting programs that I haven't heard.
I think a wonderful report when.
When he needs to.
Absolutely, it's, yeah, it's fun.
So why don't we invite you for the next meeting, if you feel like you want to make a report, let me know, and Beth knows what's on the agenda.
We think it's May twelfth. All right, or whatever.
Very good, Nancy.
All right, so now we are gonna.
No.
Yes, please.
Uh, October fifth is the full day of Young Kipore. So I was just wondering if we could move the.
Oh, yeah.
Parent-teacher conferences on the fifth, maybe to the thirteenth of October. It's a science.
I don't really get, does it? Yeah, it said the fifth and the twelfth, does it, does, can you do the twelfth and thirteenth? That would be. Anybody readers?
He was trying to have the, not have to be two nights, one week. What about the fourth, Jessie? Because I know you didn't want them to have the fourth.
Well, that's. The night. So, yeah, I talked about that.
Do you do twelve and nineteen?
Or the eleventh and twelve?
We don't want them in the same day. Because Ben and I would have to.
We're just trying to split them up a week.
We tried to do one the second night, those couple of years, but it's tough because those are teachers.
Yep.
Or understaffed, and then leaving, like, a spot for people to take in the content.
Understood.
But, but we could, we could do the twelve and the nineteen, twelve and nineteen.
Well, it's the fifth is Young Kipore.
Right.
Well, then we're lucky to go to the nineteenth, because then the semester is like.
What about September twenty-eighth and the twelfth?
I was thinking about maybe going to Monday.
Yeah.
How about Monday the third?
Yep, that works.
Which one did I have?
It would be your high school one.
Yeah, we'll switch it. We'll go to middle school and third, and then high school.
Thank you.
Yeah. And middle school on the third, Jessie?
Yeah.
Yes.
An elementary.
Yeah, that's okay for elementary.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, thank you for pointing it out. We do our best to try to, elementary stays the same.
Right?
Yes, elementary stays the same. So I just want to point out the change, a couple of, the one change that's probably that wasn't on the last one is that the first day of school is actually a half-day.
Oh, wait, so the third
The way things fell as we started to work on it, the thirty-first is a half-day because we, we didn't want to go through what we've done the last two years, which is reschedule at the last minute. So we just gave Good Fridays the day off, a full day off. I'm sorry, excuse me, for teachers is what I'm saying, for, for staff. So it's a hard half-day, meaning that we dismiss. So, so, so Good Friday is gonna be a full half-day. So at the end of dismissal, everybody goes home. So that left us a half a day of professional development for teachers because it's a full scheduled day. So we put, we put it on the first day of school. So students will come in for a half-day and teachers will stay and have professional development that afternoon. So I just wanted to point that out because that is a change, something we haven't done. I think everything else is pretty much what we talked about.
But it doesn't make sense. Should start the first day of school on the sixth and then have the seventh, a full day.
So that's gonna put you so far down into June. So almost always, when you, when you're building a school, a school calendar, they're like a slow roll into school, right? So you, you kind of call it a three, four, and five start. So you're looking to as close for three days of kids coming in at the end of August, then you have, you have Labor Day, it's four days, you know, and then you go to a full week, you know. Anyhow, so that's typically how we try to set it up. Also, you're looking to make sure the last day of school and the half-day is the fourteenth. If we start it later, you're, you're adding all those days to, you'd be at the end of June.
Just talking about starting.
Start if you
Oh, that the, that will not.
No, not to start earlier.
I didn't think so. I think you want to start later.
Start, like, start on the sixth and make that seventh day a full day, the seventh a full day. Pop that back. Starting earlier.
We're starting in August.
No, it says first day of school is
Yeah, the thirty-first, half-day.
Oh, I see where you're confused. I was too. It's up here.
Oh.
That just is another half-day. But that's not the first day.
I saw day of school one. I thought it was September one, first day of school.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we're starting
Teachers come back on the twenty-ninth, and August thirty-first is the first day of school for students.
But it's a half-day.
But it's a half-day. But that week will be three day, you know, two and a half days for kids. The following week will be Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
A move to accept the calendar with yet-its to the parent-teacher conferences in October.
Any further discussion required for the vote? All right.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura? Laura?
Yes.
Okay, Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy? And Jane. So that is the calendar has passed. Okay, so the next item, thirteen B is the approval of the summer twenty-twenty-three FFA trip to Scotland and Ireland.
Looks like Mr. Carving is gonna do.
Presentation about that. We have quite a few pages in the packet about it.
So Tanya Mushu, our biology teacher and FFA advisor, was here to present tonight. Considering it was new business, I told her, she told me she had to go at seven o'clock. I said, I said, we'll be good to go. So clearly
In future, you can interrupt us if we can
Yeah.
I didn't want to miss it. It was going well. Was there a flow? I thought so.
That's great.
Yeah, so what she was coming to present about was a opportunity for this trip that, that has come about, which, you know, we're opening up to all the students, but, you know, we thought that the FFA students might really be interested in it because it includes all kinds of farming practices, fishing centers, sustainable farming, things like that. We're, we're hoping to maybe get six kids who might be interested in the experience, but we are opening up to everybody in case there's other students that might want to go. And then this would go out in the summer of twenty-three. We don't really think that it will impact the other trip that's going out that you all approved last time around. We think it'll be a different group of students who might be interested in this trip, yeah.
I, I, looking through this tour, this looks absolutely awesome, kind of ties into the FFA program of science. I'm almost thinking like this could be a gateway into FFA, a gateway experience, like, I don't know, like, I even think like culinary pathway kids might be a really good match, kind of like the food system stuff, but
Possibly, yeah.
I, I would hope that we could get more than six kids.
Well, again, we're starting slow because, you know, some of the international trips we've done before have kind of had a different feel than this one does. Like, when you look through some of the stuff that's happening, I'm not, I'm not sure every kid is going to be interested in some of this stuff. I definitely think there are kids who are interested. So, you know, we want to put it out to everybody because we feel like, you know, there could be a lot of kids that kind of want to jump on board. Yes.
So I see Danielle Marino is doing it with her. I said, yeah, that's so, does that mean we'll have students from another, you know, that she'll bring the team?
Yeah, there's some students who was down at Valleyville. And so by, I'll open it up to, I'm not sure if it's just our two schools. It could possibly, sometimes with these, there's other schools included, but you don't have to get as many in order to take the trip out. So for this kind of experience, I think to partner up is a good idea.
I have to tell you, I, I do, after I read through it, I would want to be on this trip in a second. This tour is like Phenomenal. I wouldn't, but I really have a concern, given our overall approach with global education and all of that, to have the Italy trip and this trip at this, at the same, just basically at the same time. Because this is such an incredible draw. And to me, even if, let's say, you said to, you know, Miami Mountain, Olympics, which partnered with us previously on our trip, I mean, I will trust you, but you don't think in any way, you know, it would hurt, but I'm concerned about the issue of kids raising funds, dipping into the same that Eagle Fund and whatever. And is there a reason, I'm sure she knew about the other trip, that she didn't, she's not planning for, let's say, twenty-four?
Well, I I mean, I can't really speak to that except that this opportunity came up. And in, in the past, through some of these groups, and this one is, you know, through the educational tours, I haven't seen one like this. So I'm not sure, like, year to year, you know, like, when you have the Italy trip, it's usually, you know, you have tours and things like that. It's usually in there every year. This one seems pretty unique, and I would hate for us to miss out on opportunity if it's not continuing.
Is it possible, I mean, it's more than a year away. We don't have to vote up tonight, but is it possible? You could find, I mean, I don't know how others will feel if you could find out for us, whether it's particularly unique for the summer of twenty-three, because I also don't like sending out a message, you know, like that, okay, you know, here it is, but we're sending it out to everybody who's not ever, but I don't know, it just doesn't, it doesn't sit well for me. And may just be me.
So, I mean, I think part of our, our program, right, is to give students exploratory opportunities in a variety of different pathways, right? So to me, I think some students might be interested in Italy for, you know, one thing, and some people might be interested in the agricultural aspect of the strip. So I, I feel like it's kind of exciting to have a variety of opportunities open to students. And I get it, I hear what you're saying about, but I think we probably have enough bandwidth to support both of these groups going out at the, at the size. I don't think they're gonna be so astronomical to have multiple sources of support, grant-wise, to help out.
Well, that interests us. And is it Stephanie who's doing the other trip?
Yeah.
Stephanie, Victoria.
Yeah. Did they speak with each other and does Stephanie and Victoria feel okay?
I, I, I would assume that top, I, I don't know what the status of that is without asking. I think, again, you know, we all get that some of these things will compete. But, you know, we had long discussion before we talked about coming forward the band trip and then having the Italy trip in summer. We're gonna try to manage that as best we can. But again, to Beth's point, trying to give as many opportunities to the kids of our district, I think are really important.
There's another hand up here, and then you, Jim?
I'm gonna speak to two things. The Ag Kids never get these opportunities. And I think that Ag is returning to Berkshire County. And I think it's, I think it's so exciting because I think this is one where the kids who are Ag here, that's gonna be a four-Hers as well. We've got kids who would not be so interested in going to Italy. I realize I totally understand what you're saying about the financial, providing the financial impetus for it, but I think to, this is not gonna sound right, but I don't know how else to do it. Ag kids really get frustrated that they get left behind in so many things. And just saying.
I have to respond to that.
No, you're not gonna
And this is just my experience. And I think to have this opportunity is great. I think it's awesome. I, I think that as long as we can come up with a way to make a room for all the different groups of things. And also, too, I think while we're running into positive issues with COVID restrictions, just simply, there's been so little that's been available that everything kind of like the May meetings.
Well, that's, that's definitely one of the things.
I'll come back to it.
Because we haven't been able to do those things, there's a lot of interest right now for, for kids to want to do some things that they haven't been able to do the last couple of years.
And frankly, I, I'm a fan of this fact that they're making summertime for a variety. No, I am. I think, you know, I, I really, I think the time on learning in school is important. I prefer that we don't have learning loss during the year, but yet expanding into the summer, I'm a big fan.
So Jim?
Yeah, are you gonna be saying some advisory protocol?
Not necessarily. We're gonna kind of play it by year and see how many kids are interested and then how many of them are in FFA. Because we might be able to dovetail some of those FFA meetings with some of the things to prepare for this. And to the point that you made before, like, the youth four-H groups have made for a nice sort of theater system for FFA. I know that some of the kids we picked up this year is ninth and tenth graders, or kids who had done the four-H. And so the idea is, if we can, we're gonna look at the different ways we can do it. It might not have to be through advisory because the FFA needs quite frequently both in school and after school, so.
I'm getting back to, but we have one more.
Is there, the other groups have a plan to do fundraising in addition to the grant writing and everything? Is Ms. Musho's plan to also have
Lot of fundraisers.
A lot of fundraising.
We do, we do a lot through FFA.
Okay.
And so she's planned on doing some of the similar FFA ones, but having money for the kids who are involved, some will go to FFA, some will go towards the trip. And so kind of, they're expanding some of their ideas. Again, they're kind of in the same boat the last couple of years. It's been hard to do some of the fundraising they used to do.
Yeah.
And so they used to go out a lot with the kids to various places, get farm markets, things like that, to, to offer some stuff up. We just haven't had that opportunity. So she thinks that next year in the fall, getting back to that, might be able to generate some funds to, to muster.
I'm speaking for Art Batacchi. He called me about this particular item. And he had a concern of how closely tied our participation is to the Connecticut crew because he feels uncomfortable about how things went with the Galapagos trip and that there was, might have been pressure put on our group to go when, even though there were questions from the school committee about whether it was a good idea. So is, is there, is our being able to go contingent on our being partnered with Connecticut's school?
I think for this one, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted
Yeah. And I think, again, I, I totally understand where Art's coming from. I think it was complicated by the tour company and the pressure that they were putting on both groups about whether, some reluctance to continue to extend the time period based on COVID. Because when it first happened, they were all for, oh, we can let you go this time or this time. And as we got closer to those next times, it was more about, you gotta make a decision to use your money. So that, that was kind of, I think, where some of that pressure came from. And, you know, in Connecticut, they were opening up a little quicker than we did. So they were willing to go.
Back to you, Bonnie.
Okay. First, Jessie, based upon what you said, that, what you said, feeling that it's not an issue of bandwidth, I, I get supported. I just want to say, Nancy, this district has been so proactive in terms of, as a matter of fact, I read the city, the Eagles blog, where we hosted the national president of FFA saying, nothing existed the way it existed at now ever in terms of a community that's supported FFA in an environment like this. And we know our kids start to do some truly phenomenal trips and activities as a result of it. So I don't think this is a district that ever has put
Yeah, I didn't mean to put a disparity in that district. Yeah, no, no, I see what you're saying. Yeah, no, no, I, FFA was started when my kids were here. So, yeah, and no, there was no disparagement on that, at all. And certainly, that was unintentional.
Dennis, and then, um, yeah.
Just for, for what it's worth, Bonnie, you know, this, what's interesting in looking at this is, is that this is unlike most of the trips that I've ever seen presented in terms of, yeah, kids that are interested in Ag and so on. This, this basically gets into, just looking at
I went through it.
The detail in here. I mean, if a kid has any kind of a scientific bent at all,
Yeah.
you know, in, in biology or, you know, things, things that are, you know, involved in, in that culture and so on, you know, this, this looks like a bang-up program. Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate you recognizing that because that's one of the things that we were drawn to is that, as you said before, open it up to everybody. There's definitely some things that a kid who might not be involved in FFA or even thought about it would be like, wow, this sounds cool. And again, like with all our programs, it's all about sustainability. So how do we get more kids to be interested if they don't know they're interested? And some things like this. A kid or a parent, like, if I was a parent.
A kid or a parent. Like, if I was a parent and I, you know, you know, not that I haven't been in the past, but.
That's a pretty amazing experience.
It is. When I read through this, that's what I said. Oh, good.
I move to approve the overnight field trip that's presented by Tanya Michaud. Look forward to it.
Second.
Okay. Bonnie? Are we finished with our discussion? Ready to vote? Alright, Deb?
Yep.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil? Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And Jane. Okay. I said yes. I, I, I guess I said Jane and I didn't say yes. Yeah, okay, but I am putting yes down in the notes.
Thank you.
Alright. Now, I don't believe we have any options for this, and we're going to subcommittees. And finance has not met. Anything from community relations and public school advocacy beyond a big thank you for your work from, from all of us?
Thanks to the group. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so now Dennis, for policy, we have a lot of policy to vote on here.
Yeah, it's, it's a second read on a lot of them. There's eleven of them on the list. And the packet itself, you know, has, you know, has, has, has them in it. If you haven't, you know, if you haven't spent, you know, the time since the last school meeting, committee meeting, you know, foreign languages. I, I guess we probably though should, should take them one at a time.
I move to accept school committee operation goals filed via.
Second.
Discussion.
I would just say, I, I, we do need to discuss what this means to us in the future. I certainly won't pass it, but I think it's something that we can put on the agenda in the future of how we're going to fulfill this policy. Alright, so we vote?
Yes.
So this is.
BA.
BA. Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara? Nancy?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
I move to approve valuation of school committee operational procedures filed via.
Second.
Right. Vote. Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara? Nancy?
Yes.
Jane?
Yeah.
I move to approve policy regional school district budget transfer authority filed DG, DBJ dash one.
Second.
Alright, vote on that. Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy? Jane?
Yes.
Move to approve funding proposals and applications filed DD.
Second.
Alright, Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Jane. I just want to interject. If anybody, we're moving quickly here. If anybody wants to discuss, would you please make, make yourself known, because I'm keeping my eye out.
I move to approve federal fund supplement, not supplement, policy filed DEC.
Second.
Alright. There are no doubts there. Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy? And Jane?
Move to approve regional school district authorized signatures filed DGA dash one.
Second.
Alright, Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes, sorry.
Nancy? Jane? Yes.
I move to approve regional school district bonded employees and officers filed DH dash one.
Second.
Alright, Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Jane.
I move to approve regional school district audits filed DIE dash one. It's a duplicate. DH one is a duplicate. You need a.
Second.
Alright, Deb?
Uh, yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
I approve to, it's, I motion. Stick it forward. I motion to approve fiscal accounting and reporting filed DI.
Second.
Alright, Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
That's.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Jane?
And then I move to approve purchasing filed DJ.
Second.
Alright, Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Jane?
I move to approve purchasing authority filed DJA.
Second.
Alright, Deb?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie? Tara?
Yes.
Nancy? And Jane? Yes.
Thank you, Policy Committee, doing the work that it's worked.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Alright, now you have personnel and negotiations. Bonnie, you want to give an update?
We are still negotiating with personnel. We have scheduled, we don't have dates yet, right?
We don't.
Alright.
We're still working on it.
It's, it's getting more hard to get those dates. Jim, when are you gone? Eighth to twenty second. You want to leave here alive?
We're expecting you to fall in.
I'll do that. I'm going through the fourth until the, uh.
Twenty sixth?
Twenty, twenty sixth, right.
Twenty sixth. Alright.
That's, and that's a couple of school committee needs.
Will be.
So, that's going to be interesting. Okay.
Alright, that's my report.
Alright, so building and grants are not here. The evaluation stuff, maybe.
We're gonna hold off. Oh, wait.
Yeah, so we'll be meeting probably when you get back to the notification.
I'm thinking that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You, you might want to, since he and I are both going to be gone through the twelfth, you might want to make sure we have a forum.
Well, I'm wondering whether we need to appoint somebody.
Well, we, we both are going to be gone at the same.
I know, I know. I, I understand we may have. We probably, we need an alternate plan. They got a forum for negotiations if there, both of them are away. Well, if Bonnie and I am above there, that's, that covered, that is a forum.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, alright.
So, really quick, Jim, superintendent evaluation. So we're going to be meeting in June for that? You're, you'll be back, you're gone all of the missions.
I'm only going through those.
You'll be back on the twenty second. We can meet on the twenty third. He won't have any jet lag. We can meet on the twenty third because he won't have any jet lag and he'll just be feeling very spiffy.
He probably will. Unless, but unless it's seventy five or above, I won't come out of the house.
Executive minutes, we're holding off until after budget season.
Yeah. Regular subcommittee not met. Liaison to the early childhood and liaison to Southern birth and childcare have not met. And has, is there anything to report on the public health committee that you?
No, we haven't. We haven't met.
Could we actually, in our next meeting, just, given that there's like, it would be nice to hear from the, the advisors or get a report for them that you guys can relate to us or something like that. Just because other communities are considering masking and whatnot. Just might be appropriate.
I haven't, I haven't had anybody reach out and talk about any of that kind of stuff, but we meet regularly and our focus was moving more towards mental health and social emotional supports that whole group is, is looking at. So, we're due, but, you know, it, it was just with, with everything coming up with budgets and that kind of stuff. We'll probably do it after, maybe after the week of the tenth. Yeah.
So we have some future agenda.
Yeah, I'm, I put it in here. I would recommend that people look at the updates every week that are on the website because that gives you a sense of how things are going.
I, I post daily. I mean, I update the chart daily. So, I don't post it. Mr. Thompson posted because he's amazing, but I fill it in, so.
It's right in the news section.
It's in the news right up front.
Scroll, scroll down below the banner. We'll pull it up.
Alright.
Pushing the jerk.
There's a second. Alright. Anybody who's opposed to that, here we go. You a favor?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes. Tara?
Yes.
Nancy? And Jane? So, do we?
Yes.